Okay, do it orally?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
We call out February fourteenth being the order this time we got six present and one on video. At this time we stand for invocation and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for each and every one that's here tonight and pray you watch over us, lead, guide, direct us in each and everything we say and do. They would do good for this county and prove things and help everybody get along good and treat everybody right. Thank you for everything you've done for us in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you. First thing on the agenda is to approve of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing I'd like to see moved.
Yes, sir.
On the agenda, I would like to move M seven and ten after H, public comments.
You got a second?
Second.
Second.
The motion by supervisor Bryan, second by supervisor Matthew, that we remove M seven and ten after our public comments. Are there any questions? All in favor? Six, Jordan. Did you get that, Jordan?
Supervisor Miles votes aye.
Seven, vote. Next to be an approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion by supervisor Allen, second by supervisor Bryant, that we approve the minutes. Are there any questions? All in favor? If it's going.
Aye.
Okay, good. So we got seven. Next, the approval of claims.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by supervisor Bryan, second by supervisor Davis, that we approve the claims. Are there any questions? All in favor? Six, Mr. Miles.
Supervisor Miles votes aye, Mr. Chairman.
Seven. The next on the agenda will be announcements. Do we have any announcements? Then let's move down to public comments.
All right, we have fifty emailed and mailed in letters.
Okay.
And we have six signed up.
All right.
Want to do the people present first?
We can do that first. Thank you.
Donna McRae Jones.
Each one have three minutes to speak.
And District two soon to be three.
Thank you.
No, District three soon to be two.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna McRae Jones and I stand before you today to this evening with the hat on from Habitat for Humanity. Just wanted you to know the covert has impacted us some, but we're still live and running here in Buckingham. I am now, I'm
Each one have three minutes to speak.
And District Two, soon to be Three.
Thank you.
No, District Three, soon to be Two. Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna McRae Jones, and I stand before you today to this evening with the hat on from Habitat for Humanity. Just wanted you to know the covert has impacted us some, but we're still live and running here in Buckingham. I am now, I'm statute taking this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Robert Agee, District Six.
My name is Robert Agee of District Six, from Miss Chambers, District. I have concern about these solar panels, not so much as against them, but in twenty-five, thirty years when a life expectancy gone in Apex and two or three of these other companies have been bought out and sold out and closed, county may be stuck with these solar panels and moving them or just get them disposed of. And I have concern with that for our children, grandchildren, a lot of us won't be here, but a lot of grandchildren will be in this county. And that's all I have to say about it. I'm not necessarily against the solar panels, but I'm worried about what the county's going to be doing within thirty years if we stuck with them. Thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
What's that route number? Forest Road, you said?
Forest Road.
State Route what?
Right off Route twenty.
Route twenty?
Off the Route twenty.
Off of Route twenty, seven twenty is the number of the road that comes up to Forest Lane first and then Forest Road.
Got it, Mr. Carter.
Hello, my name is Joanne Meeks, and I was down here six months ago about the road, trying to get it to be a state maintained road, but because it was considered a private road, they would not do that. However, I had to get an attorney, and he did some digging, and he said when my builder, J. T. Holmes, purchased those two lots down from his area, that the road should have been bonded by the county of Buckingham, and Buckingham did not bond the road. So now, we're asking for you all to please state maintain that road because I've been down there for six months, and our mail, we haven't had mail for three weeks. UPS takes our packages and drops them at the top of the road, and only that, all the tree damage from the first storm, we had to go and clean all that up ourselves. So I feel that Buckingham needs to be responsible for not bonding the road. They could have cashed it in and DMV would have made it a state maintained road. And I hope you all take consideration on that.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Also, because the road would be blocked, no emergency vehicles could get down to the residents, and that's another concern about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
McCarthy Goss, District Four.
Hello, esteemed members, Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Carl Carter. Now, I know I have three minutes, and I can't get this done in three minutes. I already know that, but let me give you a little history on me. I am a high school and college basketball official. And as you know, we officials, we like to think we have answers for everything. But I'll tell you a quick story. After leaving James Mattis University, many years after leaving James Mattis University, graduating there, I moved to Nashville, Tennessee. And there, I met someone named Dr. Gloria Bonner. She was a professor, dean at Middle Tennessee State University, and she became a very good friend and a mentor. And after finding out that I was from Buckingham County, she asked me a question, and it was a long list of detailed questions, because that's what she did. She's always challenging your thoughts. She said, McCarthy, what are you doing to celebrate Dr. Carter G. Woodson? And the referee in me wanted to jump out and give her a quick answer, and I thought, and I couldn't. I said, at that time, I thought to myself, if I ever moved back, one of the things I wanted to do, one of my missions would be to have a Carter G. Woodson Day. So, let me tell you about my group, the Unity Action Team, which is an offshoot of Ellis Acres. We are a group of residents who got together sometimes to have tough conversations to find out each other's thought processes, because oftentimes, we just don't listen enough. And what we wanted to do was create a day where we can all come together and celebrate. So one of these days, we wanted to celebrate the world renowned Dr. Carter G. Woodson. And I am here today to tell you about that day, which will be held on April second, April second. Location will be determined, but we're shooting for Straight Street at this time. We want to have, we want to collaborate, or we are collaborating with members of the community, certain organizations in the community, including Historic Buckingham and Buckingham African American Life and Historic Society. So again, we want to bring this to you, so hopefully all of you all can come out and participate with us. We want to have the youth involved as well, and if the youth are involved, then we can empower them with information to learn about someone who is homegrown right here from Buckingham County and is world renowned, world renowned. So yes, I know my time is up. Sorry about going over a little bit, but again, April second, and please come out and celebrate with us. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
This one is from Theodore Smith.
Please take your time to thoroughly investigate the large industrial scale solar project that is being sold to the county. The community needs your due diligence to check references, evaluate the claims and promises of the salesman, and understand the downfalls that if approved will have on this community. The citizens did not have proper notice when the developer introduced the plan last time. Please listen to the people and study their concerns that are being brought before you. Land use changes for the neighboring properties. People cannot use their land as before. The roads are affected. School children at their bus stops. People driving their cars and trucks. Livelihoods are affected when the cattle and other animals do not produce because of the construction noises and damages. The effects on livestock are documented. The economy in Buckingham is harmed by the lost production of the farms and by the many jobs lost in the timber industry that are the economic engine. Those that provide services and supplies that support the timber industry are harmed. Jobs in transportation, machinery maintenance, harvesting, replanting, insect control, et cetera, will all be affected. This has not all been heard before. So much new information has come to light since November. There are now even more counties that don't want to do these size projects. Counties that once accepted industrial solar are now rejecting it due to the catastrophes that were experienced. If things with Apex's solar project in Campbell County were so wonderful, ask yourself why were at least twenty-six violations and at least six stop work orders issued? Why were there television news reports about the roads? Why do they not want more of these projects? Please talk to Dale Moore, the supervisor for the district of the project, and Brian Stokes, the environmental engineer for the county. Please call Mecklenburg County about Grasshopper Solar and Bluestone Solar, Essex County about Essex Solar Center, Louisa County about Belcher Solar. The salesman can say that this project will be different, but how do we know that? Promises are not proof. I urge you to take time and talk to the other counties. There is much to be learned from the other counties who have experienced firsthand of the pitfalls of these large scale solar plants. Please evaluate this as if it was going to be in your backyard and in your neighborhood until the year 2062. Every time you or your constituents drive by, what will they think? Will it be anger and regret at having the project? Or happiness and pride that it is not there? Thank you for your time and consideration. Theodore Smith, property owner forty-five eighty-three, Bridgeport Road.
Sarah Benson.
To the Buckingham County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, my name is Sarah Benson, and I live at two-seven-two Ridge Lane, Scottsville, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP two-nine-nine on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. My neighborhood access is from Route twenty and backs up to the proposed industrial solar project. The increased construction traffic will affect the safety of all the residents. The project estimates two thousand seven hundred trips by tractor trailers and dump trucks, which in reality equals five thousand four hundred trips as they must also return via Bridgeport. Certainly, a majority will arrive at Bridgeport Road via Route twenty. Almost four hundred workers will be arriving and leaving twice a day. Apex claims this will be a year-long process. It will become difficult to even get in and out about our neighborhoods safely, and most importantly, keep our children safe as buses and parents compete with the deluge of trucks and heavy equipment. Construction noise will also affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do our farmers stand to lose? Industrial, solar belongs in industrial parks, not in their front, side, and backyard. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County.
My name is Susan Tyler, and I live at seven-twelve Hummingbird Road, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP two-nine-nine on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the habitat, natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect the property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. My neighborhood access is from Route twenty and backs up to the proposed industrial solar project. The increased construction traffic will affect the safety of all the residents. The project estimates two thousand seven hundred trips by tractor trailers and dump trucks, which in reality equals five thousand four hundred trips as they must also return via Bridgeport. Certainly, a majority will arrive to Bridgeport Road via Route twenty. Almost four hundred workers will be arriving and leaving twice a day. Apex claims this will be a year-long process. It will become difficult to even get in and about our neighborhoods safely, and most importantly, keep our children safe as buses and parents compete with the deluge of trucks and heavy equipment. Construction noise will also affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do our farmers stand to lose? Industrial solar belongs in industrial park, not in my front, side, or backyard. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County.
This is from Wayne Snotty. I live at Bridgeport Road, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP two-nine-nine on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. Bridgeport Road is my neighborhood, subjecting it to the increased construction traffic will affect the safety of all the residents. The project estimates two thousand seven hundred trips by tractor trailers and dump trucks, which in reality equals five thousand four hundred trips as they must also return via Bridgeport. Almost four hundred workers will be arriving and leaving twice a day. Apex claims this will be a year-long process. It will become difficult to even get in and about our neighborhoods safely, and most importantly, keep our children safe as buses and parents compete with the deluge of trucks and heavy equipment. Construction noise will also affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do our farmers stand to lose? Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, not in my neighborhood. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County.
My name is Susan Tyler and Johnny Tyler, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP two-nine-nine on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. My neighborhood access is from Route twenty and backs up to a proposed industrial solar project. The increased construction traffic will affect the safety of our residents. The project estimates two thousand seven hundred trips by tractor trailers and dump trucks, which in reality equals five thousand four hundred trips as they must also return via Bridgeport. Certainly, a majority will arrive to Bridgeport Road via Route twenty. Almost four hundred workers will be arriving and leaving twice daily. Apex claims this will be a very, a year-long process. It will become difficult to even get in and about our neighborhoods safely, and most importantly, keep our children safe as buses and parents compete with the deluge of trucks and heavy equipment. Construction noise will also affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do our farmers stand to lose? Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, not in their front, side, or backyard. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County.
Carl Webster. My name is Carl Webster, and I live at two-two-zero-two Payne's Pond Road, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP two-nine-nine on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. Payne's Pond Road is our neighborhood. We love the tranquility living off a dirt road affords us. While our vehicles may be dusty, we also enjoy seeing wildlife as we come and go to our homes. Deer, wildlife, turkeys, rabbits, and squirrels are plentiful, and bears, bobcats, otters, and many other species also make their home in our neighborhood. We don't want to be surrounded by solar panels, nor do we want to be subjected to a year, probably longer, of construction. Construction noise and traffic will affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by the pile driving. What do our neighbors at Long Bottom Farm stand to lose? We are frightened of probable erosion issues affecting our properties. We did not choose to live in an industrial zone. Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, certainly not in our front, side, or backyard. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County.
Laura and Robert Keaton, three-two-eight-four Payne's Pond Road, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Council.
Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. Payne's Pond Road is our neighborhood. We love the tranquility living off a dirt road affords us. While our vehicles may be dusty, we also enjoy seeing wildlife as we come and go to our homes. Deer, wild turkey, rabbits, and squirrels are plentiful, and bears, bobcats, otters, and many other species also make their home in our neighborhood. We don't want to be surrounded by solar panels, nor do we want to be subjected to a year, probably longer, of construction. Construction noise and traffic will affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do our neighbors at Long Bottom Farm stand to lose? We are frightened of probable erosion issues affecting our properties. We did not choose to live in an industrial zone. Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, certainly not in our front, side, or backyard. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County. Claire Wambold and I live at 334 Hummingbird Road, Scottsville, District One. I respectfully request you to not assess SUP 299 on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. My neighborhood access is from Route 20 and backs up to the proposed industrial solar project. The increased construction traffic will affect the safety of all the residents. The project estimates 2,700 trips by tractor-trailer and dump trucks, which in reality equals 5,400 trips as they must also return via Bridgeport. Certainly, a majority will arrive to Bridgeport Road via Route 20. Also, 400 workers will be arriving and leaving twice a day. Apex claims this will be a year-long process. It will become difficult to even get in and out of our neighborhood safely and, most importantly, keep our children safe as buses and parents compete with the deluge of trucks and heavy equipment. Construction noise will also affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do our farmers stand to lose? Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, not in their front, side, or back door. Please vote no to this project to protect us as residents of Buckingham County.
Kenda Hunumondi, IST 5 Board of Supervisors Valentine's Day Meeting, 2022. That's quite an agenda for tonight. A lot is going on in Buckingham. Our county has so much to offer. What do we value now? Will you value our county's children and a livable future for them? Will you support a beautiful, healthy environment to attract tourism and new residents? Or will a clean energy future look like massive industrial sites? There are many opportunities to support a sustainable future. A short list would be two. One dot provide an equitable, fair education with expanded access and locations for our students. Two dot promote tourism by supporting services and advertising what we have to offer. Three. Develop services that attract the work from home sector who want to move from the cities to a healthy location. Four dot encourage community-scale solar that benefits the citizens financially and environmentally. Regarding industrial-scale solar development here. This past week, I noticed a number of signs announcing the February 28 joint hearing for the proposed Riverstone Solar Project. This contradicts what Mr. Carter stated last week. That this wasn't on the county website calendar because it hadn't been approved by the boss. Please keep doing the work that represents your constituent values. Thank you.
This is from Bobby Aldridge and I live at 720 Payne's Pond Road. And also, Michael Marshall. I respectfully request you deny SUP 299 on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. Payne's Pond Road is our neighborhood. We love the tranquility living off a dirt road affords us. While our vehicles may be dusty, we also enjoy seeing wildlife as we come and go to our homes. Deer, wild turkeys, rabbits, and squirrels are plentiful, and bears, bobcats, otters, and many other species also make their home in our neighborhood. We don't want to be surrounded by solar panels, nor do we want to be subjected to a year, probably longer, of construction. Construction noise and traffic will affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. And what do our neighbors at Long Bottom Farm stand to lose? We are frightened of probable erosion issues affecting our properties. We did not choose to live in an industrial zone. Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, certainly not in our front, side, or backyard. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County. Alan Booth and Shayna Begley at 73 Beaver Place, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP 299 on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. My neighborhood access is from Route 20 and backs up to the proposed industrial project. The increased construction traffic will affect the safety of all the residents. The project estimates 2,700 trips by tractor-trailers and dump trucks, which in reality equals 5,400 trips as they must also return via Bridgeport. Certainly, a majority will arrive to Bridgeport Road via Route 20. Also, 400 workers will be arriving and leaving twice a day. Apex claims this will be a year-long process. It will become difficult to even get in and about our neighborhood safely and, most importantly, keep our children safe as buses and parents compete with the deluge of trucks and heavy equipment. Construction noise will also affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do farmers stand to lose? Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, not in their front, side, or backyard. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County. My name is Ann Marshall and I live at 4566 Bridgeport Road, District One. I respectfully request you deny SUP 299 on the grounds it is not keeping to the Buckingham Comprehensive Plan and will harm the natural habitat and wildlife of our district. The ecosystem of our streams, ponds, and the James River are also in peril. It will also negatively affect our property values and will forever ruin our rural quality of life. Bridgeport Road is my neighborhood. Subjecting it to the increased construction traffic will affect the safety of all the residents. This project estimates 2,700 trips by tractor-trailer and dump trucks, in which reality equals 5,400 trips as they must also return via Bridgeport. Almost 400 workers will be arriving and leaving twice a day. Apex claims this will be a year-long process. It will become difficult to even get in and about our neighborhood safely and, most importantly, keep our children safe as buses and parents compete with the deluge of trucks and heavy equipment. Construction noise will also affect our daily lives with heavy equipment working seven days a week and pile driving every Sunday, every day but Sunday. Studies also show livestock are negatively affected by pile driving. What do our farmers stand to lose? Industrial solar belongs in industrial parks, not in our neighborhood. Please vote no to protect us as residents of Buckingham County.
Please deny the proposed special use permit from Apex/Riverstone Solar for as it does not meet the criteria in the Buckingham zoning ordinance. The following are criteria for approving in SUP. Special use permits within the AI agricultural district. The following uses may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this ordinance and the Code of Virginia. The Planning Commission may recommend and the Board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. Adult or juvenile jails, detention facilities, or correctional facilities operated or owned by local, ten, or regional governmental entities. Agricultural-based businesses not classified as intensive or manufacturing in nature by the definition of this ordinance such as feed mills, livestock markets, tack, feed, and supplies. Airport, airstrip, heliport, antique shops/thrift stores/flea markets, adult retirement community/assisted living auto and truck sales and agricultural/industrial equipment March 22, 99 automobile junkyard or graveyard bed and breakfast bulk storage tanks, commercial garage, or shop housing a business not classified as industrial or manufacturing in nature by the definition of this ordinance. Convenience/general store maximum 2,000 S.F. and no more than four petroleum pumps. Fairgrounds, country clubs, golf courses, athletic fields, swimming pools, equine facilities/activities, commercial. Dog businesses, kennels, grooming, boarding, training, trials, community centers, lodge halls, lumberyard, sawmill, planing, or chipping facility mining and quarrying with federal and/or state licensed motorsports raceways. Car shows, music festivals, or similar large events April 23. Oh, one private recreational facilities/clubs/events, archery, shooting, pools, day end. Summer camps, campgrounds, private schools and colleges, public utility generating plants, public utility booster or relay stations, transformer substations, meters, and other facilities, including railroads and facilities, and water, and sewage facilities. Radio stations, television station, and cable TV facilities, communication station and/or tower or related facilities in accordance with Article 9 of this ordinance reservoir. Restaurants, shooting ranges, including all firearm sewage treatment plants, private veterinary hospitals and clinics water systems, privately owned serving the public wayside stand with food preparations, no indoor seating. Apex Clean Energy/Riverstone Solar fails to qualify for any of the above categories. While they love to tout how many houses could be powered by a 149.5 MW industrial-sized solar plant, they have also admitted that is not the case. All the energy will be sold to corporations such as Google or Facebook. Definition of public utility. An organization supplying the community with electricity, gas, water, or sewerage. There is absolutely nothing public about about Apex/Riverstone LLC, so it should be slam dunk decision to disapprove SUP 299. Kelly Franz. District One, Blue Heron Lane. Sent from Yahoo Mail for iPhone.
Dear Buckingham County Board of Supervisors, I write today to share warehouse or company support for Apex Clean Energy proposed Riverstone Solar Project in Buckingham County. Warehouse owns and sustainably manages over 124,000 acres of timberland in the state of Virginia. We provide work for Virginia logging, hauling, and road building contractors and are a core supplier of timber to many of the state's forest product facilities. In addition to our timberlands business, we have a renewable energy segment that partners with renewable energy developers to identify a company timberlands that are suitable for wind and solar projects. Our renewable energy business enters into long-term lease agreements with reputable renewable energy partners that are industry leaders such as Apex Clean Energy. These partners identify, evaluate, permit, build, and operate the renewable energy projects in strict accordance with their lease terms and under required permits. The majority of the air land in Virginia will remain working forests and will continue to support the state forest products economy. However, where there are opportunities to convert some of our land to solar or other renewable projects, we will carefully evaluate each project. We support solar projects that provide mutual benefit for both warehouse and the communities in which we operate, creating new revenues and providing clean energy. Moreover, the optionally of solar lease agreements allows us, for us, to retain ownership of the property while exploring alternative uses for our timberland holdings. Warehouse and Apex have enjoyed a strong working relationship for several years. We have been impressed with their professionalism and expertise in the renewable energy sector. And for those reasons, we strongly endorse their pursuit of the Riverstone Solar Project in Buckingham County. Thank you for the opportunity to provide written comment in support of the Apex Riverstone Project. Sincerely, Anthony Chavez, Director of Renewable Energy.
My property is located adjacent to the parcel considered for the construction and operation of a 149.5 MW utility-scale solar facility on approximately 1,996 acres in Buckingham County. I am adamantly against this project, which would definitely harm our environment. The Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, as our elected officials, must do their due diligence in researching this important issue and allow the residents of Buckingham County to vote on this issue in a referendum. Respectfully yours. Andrea and Reinhardt Reader. 2737 Bridgeport Road. Scottsville, Virginia, 24590. This email and any file...
That is all.
Thank you. We voted in the beginning of the agenda to move Item 7 and 10 up next. We're asking Dr. Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Chairman.
And Board of Supervisors. Item 7, the, consider the use of the community-centered classroom for the Buckingham County Schools Alternative Education Program. On behalf of the school board, I would like to withdraw our request to use the community-centered classroom for alternative ed program. Been offered three other alternative sites for this program and all of which are, would be an enhancement. So I will take my recommendation to the board next Wednesday, February 26, and we hope to get started as soon as 1st of March. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
You're withdrawing your recommendation for the community-centered library facility, but...
Yes, sir.
We had a meeting the other day. Are you going to move forward with what we talked about the other day?
Yes, sir. I got to get board approval.
But you got to get your board approval for that. Okay. All right. Just want to make sure.
All right. Thank you. And if the board number have a question, Mr. Keller, Dr. Keller? But thank you, Dr. Keller. Would you move on to item 11?
Number 10.
I'm sorry, number 10.
Tonight, we have a routine budget update to adjust our state and federal grants. Federal funds are the majority of the adjustments that you see before you. Revising the current grants from proposal to actual awards and carryover amounts. Also, the addition of six ESER and ARP grants totaling $5,939,951. Most of these grants expenditures dates carry over until September 30 of 2024. I have with me Ms. Wendy Oliver, our Director of Finance, to answer any questions concerning you have in this report.
Do any board number have any questions for Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Chairman, this is Supervisor Miles. I just have a quick question about the $24,500 other, under other rebates and refunds under local revenue, sir.
That is just a reclassification of some funds. If you look down under other state revenues, you'll see a negative for benefits for other state agencies. And that's just a transfer based on... a transfer based on our authority's recommendation to reclassify that revenue.
Thank you.
Jamie.
Are there any other questions for? Thank you, Dr. Killa, thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Thank you, board members.
All right, we moving then to V dot road matters.
Supervisor Chairman, you guys need to make a motion and adopt their budget changes.
Pardon me?
So, yeah, you need to change, make a motion to, somebody needs to make a motion to adopt their budget changes so we can change them in our system.
Okay. We need a motion to make a change so we can change in the budgets, that system also.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Davis, that we were authorized to change. Are there any questions? All in favor? Six, Mr. Miles.
Supervisor Miles votes aye, sir.
Seven votes, thank you.
Vote on community center.
Do we need to vote on the other issue?
I just asked him, but he just said no.
Mr. Matthews?
No, sir, not tonight, he's got to get approval from his board.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, I'm sorry, sir, you go ahead.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I am Steve Snow, I am the Assistant Resident Engineer from the Fayetteville Residency. I'm here to talk about V dot issues. Our report for this week is, we've been getting a lot of concerns about, in all the counties, about the status of the unpaved roads due to the really bad weather recently, they're saturated and the subgrades are wet and the roads are often soft when they are not frozen. And we have been putting stone on those, but until they dry out with some good weather, we can't really recreate a lot of those roads. So at this moment, all we can do is put stone on those roads, those gravel roads. We have been doing debris cleanup from the winter storm that occurred on January twenty-second and third, and that's still underway, we're about seventy-five percent complete. We have hired six contractors to help clean up Buckingham County. We have each of those contractors for a hundred sixty hours, and we are focusing them on the secondary roads. Once they're complete, our crews, the V dot crews will do the primary roads. It's mostly due to the fact that we have to do the road closures for them and traffic control, so our crews are busy doing the safety measures for our contractors, and then once they're done, we can move on to the primary roads for our crews. We're working on the routine work orders as always when they come in. Payne's Road and Red Road, I should say Payne's Pond Road and Red Road are our two rural rustics for this coming summer. For those that don't know, rural rustics are when we change gravel roads to a hard surface, so we have those two in our system, and they will be completed this year. We are currently hauling stone to those, and as I said, we should complete that by the end of the year. Fanny White Road, which is Route six-six-five, is closed, and it will remain closed until March eighteenth. The bridge crews are replacing a culvert on that roadway. That's all I have in the formal report. One more thing is we have to set up our meeting for the six-year plan, which typically we do an hour before the board meeting, so I need to announce that publicly that we will meet with the board. Either you're administering a meeting with our resident engineer, set up the time, our best would be an hour before the next board meeting.
Chairman, I have a question. I guess you were here when Ms. Meeks and the other gentleman spoke about Forest Road, did you take any notes on that, on the state going through the process of them getting that over to state maintained? Did you take any notes on that?
There is a process, it's somewhat lengthy. Typically, if a road is public or private during development, that is solely up to the county. Some counties allow private roads, it allows more of a rustic feel and the cost of the developer a little less money. But it also typically they're not designed to be dot standards, so along with getting enough houses to become public, you have to actually improve that road to the public standard, and you have to have it right away. They also do need at least to have an agreement with the board that the board will wants the road to be public, so that's really a local decision, do we want this road to be public or not? But there are some further steps even after that that the homeowners would need to take, which isn't to actually platter right away, which they may already have, but also to improve the roads to current standards.
So y'all need to go down and check the road and see if it's up to y'all standards?
Yes, they would actually hire an engineer and he would create what we call an Azbuild Plan, and he would show us that it is, he'll do, they'll test the soils to make sure it has compaction, and they'll check all the culvert crossings to make sure they have adequate flow. They can call our office, or I can meet them after this, after I'm done, and I can talk to them about it.
Nice to figure that out about the next meeting, see what we can do to help them.
Any other questions for me?
Question, but I do want to say appreciate the way y'all have cleaned up your back roads. You know, I've got a whole lot of, whole lot of wood, if you come to the end of my road up there and look at the gravel pile, it's not a gravel pile no more, it's a super, super wood pile. What y'all counting on doing with that?
Usually those are property owner gets to decide, so we have agreements with the property owners. If they're ours, we have to mulch it. So if it's paid for by FEMA, they'll ask, some of that is covered by FEMA Disaster Relief, so they'll ask us to mulch it. A lot of times people want to buy it or sell it, the only time that would account is if it's on private property and the owner has already agreed to take them, but I'd say ninety percent of the time it will be turned into mulch, and then the private owner can use it as they wish.
Looks like it'd be mulched because most of the pine, most people don't burn wood.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question, how soon before you guys start patching some of the potholes?
Well, we still have the debris, which is currently our goal, is to get the debris off in the next month or two, so it would be after that. That would be probably, I would say, early spring or middle spring before we get to those. That's, potholes typically are something we do year-round, but during the winter, we're so busy with snow and brush removal, we can't, we just don't have the time for that, because our manpower is already spent. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With regards to, Mr. Snow, thank you for that update for Red Road. With regards to the limbs and the debris that are along the road, do y'all have a timeframe on when that will be collected?
Yes, I'd say next three to six weeks. Yeah, it would be next three to six weeks we'll be completed with that, at least on the, on the-
Okay.
Secondary roads.
And, and so thank you for that. Secondly, Windsor Place is off of Twin Creek Road, which is off Sixty, and the Wendy Knoll Lane is off of Route twenty. I wanted to see, I know we've been talking about Forest Lane as well, but I've got some folks who live on those roads in my district who would like to see if their road couldn't be taken into the state system in terms of maintenance. Not sure if they were built to state specs, I don't think one of them was, but if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and could you give me the name of those roads again?
Sure, Windsor Place and Wendy Knoll Lane.
That would also fall under Forest Road, too.
Right.
Same scenario. I thought you, you said a while ago that you were seventy-five percent complete on the second-
Brushed.
Secondary roads.
Yes.
It's going to take you another six weeks to clear that?
Well, three to six weeks, depends on the weather and how, how our crews, what work they're doing in the meantime. So if other issues come up, we have another big storm or something, then that will delay it. Three weeks is, you know, if weather stays well. Anything else?
Any more questions, but Mr. Snow, I thank you, Mr. Snow.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation to Mr. Cruz. Many years of service on the Pl- Planning Commission in Buckingham County. Send it to James D. Cruz Senior in appreciation for many years of dedicated service to the Buckingham County Planning Commission. Moving on to the agenda-
Chairman, I'd like to thank, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Cruz for all of his many years of service, he served with my father on the Planning Commission many years ago, so many thanks, Mr. Cruz.
Well done. All right, thank you. Any other board supervisors have anything to say for? Okay. You had to thank Sam, Mr. Cruz, or did we cut you off, I'm sorry?
Say something.
I'd just like to say, I hope that I was able to contribute something to the county for the years I served. It was, it was really a honor for me to be on the Pl-ity Commission. Been a real pleasure.
Amen. Thank you for the, again, for your dedicated service and many years you served the county, and you've got some hard shoes to fill. Amen. All right, next on the agenda is Ms. Michelle Lacerson. Come please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Lacerson, and I'm the Executive Director of Southside Center for Violence Prevention, the agency of Madeline's House, which is domestic violence shelter serving this area, and the SAVE program, which is the Sexual Assault Victim Empowerment Program. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak and also for your continued support of our program. Secondly, I wanted to share our efforts over the last year. We continue to provide free and comprehensive services to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault to include crisis intervention, counseling, advocacy, accompaniment, resources, referrals, and then safe emergency shelter. We continue to provide these services to victims in Buckingham County this last year. And FY two thousand twenty-one, we served eleven families from Buckingham County, providing ninety-three shelter stays. We also provided weekly therapy to multiple victims in Buckingham County and regularly had an advocate in the county as well. As you may remember, in two thousand and twenty, we expanded our therapy program and had all of our clinical staff trained specifically in play therapy to bridge a important gap in services for children. We expanded our food donation program from just shelter clients to community clients, and we also established ourselves as a center for sheltering animals and families together, so that we are also taking in pets from abused homes with their adult caretakers, and we continued those programs this past year. Similar to last year, we also had to continue to make accommodations for COVID-nineteen. This included limiting our shelter beds to just seven rooms so that unrelated families weren't sharing the same room. Providing extensions of stay because we found a lot of our clients had difficulties trying to get housing appointments and move into housing. We also engaged some counseling clients in telehealth, which we had several staff trained in so that we were certified to provide that service. Our provision of that just depended on the preference of our clients, and then we had to temporarily cease our support groups because, again, the amount of people in the room together. While we continue to offer the same advocacy and accompaniment services, we found some limitations going into certain facilities, and so sometimes those services were offered in the parking lot of whatever building they were going into instead of that building, but we were still there to support. And then we continued to see a lot of festivals and fairs and outreach events that were canceled throughout all of our counties. So as we move into two thousand and twenty-two, we're hopeful to be able to start resuming some of those other services and get back to normal, as I'm sure you all are excited for as well. And then additionally, we have worked this past year to actually obtain a second shelter location so that we can house male victims of domestic and sexual violence. Our current shelter was under permit just for housing women, and so while we've always served men, we provided shelter through hotels, and so we weren't able to offer the same level of service, the same level of interaction, and safety and security. So we are excited to be able to, to increase our services to that population. All right, well, thank you so much.
By having the questions for Ms. Lacerson. Tell me thank you for your service and your time for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Steger.
Good evening to all of you. I'm here as a representative of the Buckingham County Firefighters Association to request the use of the county's land on Wingo Road to have our annual truck and tractor pull with a tentative date right now of the twenty-third and a rain date of the twenty-fourth. We had this last year, it was very beneficial to the county and to the fire departments for the money we raised.
What month is that, Mr. Steger?
July.
What dates was that again?
Twenty-third is Saturday, then Sunday would be the, twenty-fourth would be the rain date.
Request from the, Mr. Steger, what did you think, what'd you pledge?
There's land that is been given to the hotel.
We, we were-
You cannot use that land.
Tentatively, understand that, sir.
Okay. And this will probably be the last year of using that area for the tractor pull because of the hotel and some other things coming along the pipe.
We're aware that, we've been informed that, you know, that was going to occur. The situation is preparation of a track takes a year.
Oh, yeah.
So we're asking this year, and if we have it in July, if they start construction, we can work around them, and we've actually tried, inquired into getting additional parking facilities, and if have to, we'll run a shuttle to trans, to do that, but without the, that track, we can't do it this year, and we, we need the plan, it takes five months to get our dumps in a row, as I guess saying goes. And of course, with that, and the second thing of the request is we, the county's always, y'all provided us with trash containers, the trash department brought them over and sent them out, and we actually took them back up to the dump afterwards, but that makes it easier on us trying to facilitate the trash from the, from the event.
Okay. I guess we have to have a motion to, uh-
Have you coordinated the dumpsters with Lynn?
No, sir, we, we haven't yet, we will, but last year, we went through and asked y'all first, then went back to Mr. Hill and got, worked that out with him.
Okay. How much, just out of curiosity, how much did the fire department make last year?
We donated ten thousand dollars to each fire department, so it's forty-
Each fire department?
Each fire department.
Okay.
Making motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second it.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we get a file association of permission to use the field this year.
And the four dumpsters.
And the four dumpsters.
Yeah.
All in favor, are there any questions, all in favor? Mr. Miles?
Supervisor Miles votes aye, Mr. Chairman.
Seven up, thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much, y'all come enjoy.
Thank you.
Moving down to, next agenda would be the public hearings. Ms. Epperson? Ms. Epperson?
Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, okay, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our first case for a public hearing is case twenty-one SUP two-eight-seven. Landowner Susan Hudgens, Carl Burmaster, and James Burmaster, and the applicant is James Burmaster. The property information is Tax Map one fifty-eight, parcel eleven, contains approximately one hundred and three point seven acres, and it's located at fifty-four eighty-one Mount Rush Highway, Dillon, Virginia. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit- The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb and bed and breakfast and also events. This property is zoned A1. The zoning ordinance, of course, does not permit an Airbnb, bed and breakfast with events as permitted, as a permitted by right use in an agricultural A1 zoning district. The zoning ordinance requires that the Airbnb, bed and breakfast, and/or event facility obtain a special use permit. Mr. Burmaster states that the main purpose for this application is to have events at his farm of all different types, music, car shows, live concerts. He would like to entertain 3,500 guests for these events, Airbnb, et cetera. Mr. Burmaster presented his initial application in August. After discussion with the Plant and Commission, he did resubmit that application. This application is what was introduced to you in January. Our applicant, Mr. Burmaster, is present this evening to answer any comments, questions, or concerns that we may have.
Any board member have a question for you at this time before we open the public hearing?
We have two signed up to speak.
Okay. So we open the public hearing at this time for this case?
We have Ralph Fish, James River District.
Good evening. I've got some papers that could I pass to somebody?
Yes, sir.
I think I've got enough for everybody.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Fish. I live at 26 Booth Boulevard, Buckingham, Virginia. I own property adjacent to this piece of land. When Mr. Coffey lived on the land, I could hear his tractor start up in the morning. I could hear other things went on down there, which most of the time it was just cattle, and that's natural. I retired after 46 years in the shipyard at Newport News. My, my forte was security, fire, and EMS. I come tonight to address the situation. And on that map that I pointed out to, or passed out to you, there, it marks the different locations. You've got the Toga Firehouse on 24, and you've got the Burmaster Land on 24. Down at the bottom, you'll see a yellow line with pink dots coming on it. That's, is the Amish. This past fall, I worked with the Amish, helping to get lights put on their buggies to keep them from being involved in accidents. And we traveled all over this district, down into Cumberland and into parts of Prince Edwards County, helping Amish people down there get lights on their buggies and getting them up. But if they go to 2,000 people for this event, I have no problem with the bread and breakfast. But if they go to 2,000, you put four people in a car, that's still 500 cars you're putting onto Mount Rush Highway there at 24. And, and with the fact that, if you look here, you'll see where the Amish is, the little pink dots go. The Amish, this is main routes that they take going back and forth from 15, coming over and from Saint, from Andersonville Highway Road. But these families come this way, they, they hit 24 just for a few sections, sections there. When they come by the firehouse, they drop down and go over Slate River. The buggies slow down when they get to that grade. When they cross Grease Creek, and that's where my property is located at, down by Grease Creek, the buggies have to slow down again, and then they turn onto 691 to get off of the main roads. But they try to stay off of our roads, but they have to get on them from time to time. And my concern is if we release 500 cars in the middle of the night for, after an event is over with, we're subject to having accidents or people hurt. And, and I'm opposed to it because of the noise and the pollution that would happen about my property. My kids use it for camping and hunting. But I came here tonight to, please ask you to vote no on this because I came up here to get away from the noise. I live 14 miles from Bush Gardens, and I lived with that for years. And I don't need it up here, so please, I'm asking you to vote. The bread and breakfast, I have no problem with. But I thank you kindly for your days, for your time, and y'all have a blessed day. Thank you. Any, any questions?
Can the boardroom have a question for him? Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Robert Fish, Mayesville District.
Already stated by name. But I moved up here, or bought land up here in 1979, and I looked at five different pieces of property. Property that I fell in love with was Grease Creek because it was good, clean, flowing water. Down where I'm from in tidewater, you couldn't find a creek that doesn't have algae in it or murky water. I said, this is the property I want. Well, for four generations, we've had our kids, grandkids, and great-grandkids playing in that water, fishing, swimming. Young men, we have developed them into being hunters who abide by the rules. I'm concerned about the runoff from up there. Well, you've got 2,000, 3,500 people. If they put in 20 porta-potties and it's 2,000, that's 100 people for each one of the porta-potties. Where are they going to go? Well, I guess the women will get the porta-potties, men will go in the woods. And where does that end up? Down in the creek. What about people coming along bringing drugs with them? And they go and shoot up, well, they do the needle, toss it in the woods. And all that drug paraphernalia, where does it end up? Down in Grease Creek, where my family will be playing here. Now, let you know how valuable this is to me. We've got the fifth generation coming on. Right now, we've got two twin girls only, five years old. Either this summer or next summer, they're going to be down there playing in the creek. I don't want to see those kids get hurt or damaged. I don't mind the bread and breakfast. That's not a problem. It's putting all these people coming from Richmond, Roanoke, Lynchburg, they don't know the customs of the Amish. Saturday nights, the big night for the youth to get out on the road. And here they come tanked up with drugs and alcohol, speed out of there at 70 mile an hour. What happens? You've got dead children. I don't want to see that. Another reason is the air quality. You say, well, how's that affected by the wind? Like my brother was stating, you can hear the dogs barking up there. You can hear cows when they were mooing up there. That I don't mind. I grew up on a farm in western North Carolina. I enjoy hearing those sounds. But I don't want to hear the constant boom, 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 boom. Another problem with the air quality, we have Christian groups that come up and use my brother's property and my property. And we let them camp. And we've worked with them. And sang songs with them and told them stories and read Bible to them. How's it going to affect that when you're trying to minister to children and you've got over there that big boom, boom, boom going on, and every other words a cuss word?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, sir.
Time's up?
Thank you.
That's all we have signed up.
Most, you have anything to say?
Any questions for me?
What's your name, sir?
I'm Carl Burmaster, District 4, and Chairman Miles, First Chairman Chairman.
Here's the applicant.
I just didn't know who we were.
I can address each and every one of those. First of all, I don't know Mr. Fish. I've tried to contact everybody I could contact that was anywhere near this property, which I did. That's why I went back with her and we changed some things and I redid the application because I've tried to, you know, make everybody, who will. But I figured out where Mr. Fish lives today. It's, it's one mile from my driveway. I don't know how loud he thinks the music will be, but there's no way he'll hear it from his driveway. Two, I'll have no events at night. That was one of the stipulations that we put in. I didn't want none at night. I want them during the day so I can keep an eye on things. I don't do drugs. I'm not into drugs. I'm not going to have the type of bands there where people will be shooting up needles, cases that, you know, far as I know. I've talked to the Sheriff's Department for any of these events. They will be there. Got to have a certain amount of porta-potties per a certain amount of people for people to use them. What else was they addressing for me here? Traffic, the Amish, I mean, night times, like I said, I plan on having the events starting from 11:00 to 12:00 in the afternoon. Now, we're talking about four or five events a year. We're not talking about every weekend. We're talking about four or five events a year. And I plan on opening up, I'm, I'm a Christian. I plan on opening it up to youth groups, opening it up to the nonprofit organizations. When it's not being used, they can come out and have a place to go. It's a beautiful lake. As far as the water pollution, I've had Ms. Snotty, which is here from the Water Authority, her engineer come out to my property, show them what I was going to do, where I was going to do it. And they said it's going to have no effect whatsoever on the quality of the lake or the water. I sincerely ask you all to pass this. It's, you know, I, my son, we've been going, been here. I hunted here from when I was 14 years old, when I moved here 17 years ago. But the whole time my son was in school, there was not one thing to take my family to, to do anything. I would love to be able to have this once a month, have Family Day, have, you know, a small band during the day to come out there. People come out with a family, hot dogs, hamburgers, a place for these young youth to go where they don't have to be out on the streets. They have a place to go to have fun. You know, this is a beautiful piece of property. I haven't got it where it needs to be yet. With all due respect to Mr. Fish, I'll do anything I can do to accommodate what he wants me to accommodate. But I'm not, you know, trying to do this every week. I'm just trying to do it four to five times a year. It wouldn't start until next year because it takes a lot of planning, just like the fire department said. It takes planning. You know, I got to let the Sheriff's Department know, EMS know. And I have, I had V-Dot come out. I've got like 400 yards straightaway right there. They told me if I needed to, I could put in a gravel turning lane, which I plan on doing anyway on my own this fall, before next year without, and that wasn't even in my stipulation to do it, but I'm going to do it anyway because I want everything to be safe. I don't want anybody to get hurt. I don't want any drugs on my property. I want a place for people to go and have fun. I just ask you all, you know, to pass this.
And the boardroom have a question for him, for Mr. Burmaster.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you, and I'd like to commend the applicant for this notable project. And I don't have any issue with it overall. I appreciate him amending condition four to 200 and condition seven, yay, to 11 a.m. as opposed to 8 a.m., but I'm uncomfortable, Mr. Chairman, with the cap at 3,500. I've talked to several people who live in my district, which this project would be in, excuse me, and as well as the applicant, Mr. Burmaster, and I'd like to see that number down. So I'll be voting in opposition to this just because, not, not on the whole project, but just, just because of that large number.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burmaster, how, 3,500 people is quite a few people.
Yes, sir.
What type of band that do you think is going to draw 3,500 people to Buckingham? What's the name that I can, maybe I can associate with that number?
I'm a musician. I have contacts in Nashville. And it's not far feasible to have Hank Williams Jr. come out or have Jeff Lewis Clinton come out or... Like, I'd rather I get some good gospel bands out. I mean, I have friends that are in the music business. I mean, that's not my main, things I want to do there. You know, it's kind of, this is kind of new for me too. And I want to talk to the people in Buckingham to find out what, what they want, what would they like to do? What kind of events would they like to have out here also? I say music because that's what I've done my whole life, you know, so that's what I know. And I know it's fun. I know people like to get out. People like to dance. People like to have fun. You don't have to have drugs and all kinds of stuff to have fun with music. Have some good music, some good food, and go out and have some fun. I have 105 acres there. I haven't cleared, you know, what I need to clear for more if I need it. Because I don't anticipate having anything like that this year. I got, I want to build and see, you know, what, what needs to be done slowly. But 3,500 people, I think it could happen if, I would do 3,000. I would never try to hit it right on 3,500 people. It would have to be tickets only or whatever, just for four to five events a year. Other than that, it would be small stuff. It wouldn't be with a couple hundred people, if that. So, you know, that's all I'm asking.
I have another question too.
Sir.
Since, I mean, 3,500 people and I guess there's no restroom facilities there on site yet, but you, your plans are to use porta-potties, is that?
Porta-potties at first. It's a certain, there's a ratio you have to use. I have talked to Paul at the county. He does all the sewage and plumbing. I've talked to him. He came out to the, to my land, told me exactly what I would have to do if I wanted to put in a regular, because where I'm putting this is above. He said it would go away from the lake. He told me the type of system I had to put in. He drawed down a piece of paper. It's where you'd have an event, and then it's slowly for a week, it's a big tank, it's slowly for a week, you know, goes into the septic field. So yes, I have talked to the county about it. If things work out, I will put the money in it to do that. But I don't want to do that if, you know, it's not going to work out for me. That's a lot of, lot of money. So first, I would, yes, I would do porta-potties.
And you got also listed in here an Airbnb, and how many people was that going to house?
Airbnb would just be if somebody from college or someone wanted to use the house or something. It's nothing to do. There's no overnight camping at all. This Airbnb is just for my house, for the house. If somebody from like college or something needed a place for a regular Airbnb, that's all that would be. There's no overnight camping at all.
How many people were you talking about housing at one time?
Well, I only have four bedrooms, so it wouldn't be for a few, you know, a family or whatever.
Are you living in that house now?
Right now, we are, but we're going to build a little cabin down by the water and then we'll use the house for that.
You've got a lot of ifs and ands, and you don't have a whole lot of plans.
Well, it's, you know.
I mean, you've got a lot of plans, but you don't have anything in concrete.
Well, no, well, it's in concrete. It's just a matter of getting the money. I didn't want to go to the bank and borrow a bunch of money to execute everything unless I knew it was going to be approved. So, you know, that we went, went and looked at the application for another application to Airbnb. And, you know, that's, that's if somebody just wanted to use it or something, you know what I mean? Right now, we're living in it. It wouldn't happen. The main thing is the events, the events and the stuff like that.
Talking about food and concessions and stuff like that, what, how are you going to do that?
Vendors.
Like a tractor pull, more or less.
Kind of like a tractor pull, yes. It'd be just like, like I said, four, four events a year, have vendors there. And, you know, they could open it up also to, you know, the church groups and stuff like that to come out. Fire departments, police, the police, the police come out and do fishing over there sometimes and serve you some of the fire department people.
Started off at 5,000. We dropped it back to 3,500. Come back up, but anyway, it's 3,500 right now, but... Blessings are issued somewhere. I don't have a problem with it, but you go ahead. Burmaster, would you consider dropping the number of people down a little lower? I think what Mr. Miles was saying, with too many people.
I would, if, if that's what would be necessary.
If you start a little lower, then you can gradually, you know, come and go up. Be willing to drive it down to about 2,000? Can the board support that?
That's what I'd like to see, Mr. Chairman, 2,000.
Could you live with that if the board agreed, drop down to 2,000?
If that's going to get it started, I, the only reason I, you know, the bigger number is if, so if it works well for not only myself, it works well for Buckingham, and it was, it could accommodate more people, I'd have to come back and do all this again, correct? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
Well, see, I want to see you go in business, you know, I want to see you get started, but...
2,000 will be fine.
Okay, we can, I can support 2,000.
But what about the, the conditions of number of events per year? I mean, you said you don't want to do more than four or five.
I say five a year, five large events a year.
I think that would be, that's not a condition right now, but I think it's something that you need to limit it to some, some amount.
Yes, it's no way you could do one every month or something like, you know, like that every week. It's no way. It's just too hard. You would have to, I would say five, five a year would be great.
Yes, sir, I, I have a question.
Five.
Condition four, it says, "The sheriff's office shall be notified three weeks prior."
Yes, I'm talking, I'm talking five large events. Yes, I'm talking, I'm, I'm talking five large events now, I still wanna have like weekly small events, you know what I mean? Um, fifty people, whatever, you're talking, are y'all talking about just the large events, up to two thousand people events? Or y'all talking about twenty-five people events, having a band?
If you were gonna do a large event, I would feel more comfortable with four per year. And, you know, the smaller events are not really what I would be concerned about, twenty-five people or less.
I can go with that.
I mean, that, that's.
I'd agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
During your major events?
Yes, for.
Let, let's talk about your big events.
Yes, sir.
Um, what kind of security do you have on?
I talked to Billy Kidd about it, and it's eighty dollars an hour to hire off-duty deputies. And I would, whatever amount of deputies it would need to take for the security is what I would hire.
Okay. Sheriff Kidd, is that agreeable with you?
So we need to close the public hearing, there's no more questions for him, then we need to make a, um, vote on this. At this time, we close the public hearing, extra board pledge on this, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Got a question?
Yeah, I've, I've got one more. In Condition Seven, it says, um, I guess, Ms. Edmiston, does this pertain to the big events, number seven?
This will pertain to the big events.
I would like to add a condition in number seven to notify the adjoining landowners. As well, you know, um, it says here that, that you have to notify us.
Yes.
You know, each board member?
Yes.
I, I want the courtesy given to the adjoining landowners.
Would that be on the responsibility of the?
That, oh, yes, ma'am, that's the responsibility of the applicant.
Take care of that.
Um, and, and that would be added to Condition Seven. Okay.
Mr. Miles, that's in your district, you hear what he's saying?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate, um, Mr. Brewmaster, um, being amendable to those, yes, sir.
Thank you, okay, can we get a motion?
We had, we had two other, make sure we got the, the conditions that were gonna be changed, right? To two thousand people and four large events, not to exceed two thousand people, is that correct?
Eleven AM and all. I think others to number seven.
And how would y'all want me to, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. How would y'all want me to contact them, like certify letter, just come knock on the door, or, you know, what?
Well.
I mean, I don't mind going up and talking, I know my, my direct adjoining owners, I don't know, uh, I have one that I've, I don't know.
It becomes he said, she said.
Exactly, that's my point, he said, well, he never got in touch with me or something.
Yeah.
Was any type of noise, uh, decimal level, uh, agreed upon in any conditions?
He was called.
That's, how many decibels?
Eleven PM and you three members are not so happy. And you could use the adjoining property owners that are listed in his original application.
There you go, okay. Well, I, to, to protect the applicant.
Yes.
That would be you, sir.
Certified letter?
Yes, sir, because then it becomes a he said, she said.
Exactly, yes, sir, I would prefer to do it that way.
Yeah.
One more question from Mr. Burmester. Here now, can we, what is the board's pledge?
All right, so move to pass with, uh, the few amendments, two thousand people, uh, four large events, hundred, um, people before needs to talk to the sheriff, and then notify the property.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we will pass it with the conditions added tonight. Are there any questions? All in favor? Hand raised? Miles?
Supervisor Miles votes aye, Mr. Chairman.
So that's seven, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Miles.
Mr. Chairman, the next public hearing is for case twenty-two ninety-five. This is Tax Map Nine, Parcel Ten A, it contains approximately twenty-five point one five nine acres. It's located at one forty-three Hatton Ferry Road, Scottsville. It is in the Slate River Magisterial District. Our landowners and applicants are Jennifer Sombor and Katie Van Skiver. Their wish is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast campsite and event center. Um, the zoning ordinance, of course, does not permit an Airbnb bed and breakfast campsite and event center. Um, please note that the events to include beekeeping, honey harvesting, survival skills, reef making, cookie baking, spa weekends, classes and therapy for Army veterans, and interactive programs for children and the elderly. Um, Mrs. Sombor and Ms. Van Skiver are both here in the audience with us this evening to address questions, comments, or concerns that you as the board or anyone else may have.
We open the public hearing at this time, any, are there any questions?
No one signed up to speak on this?
I'd like to just to say, it's in my district, and I haven't heard not the first comment against it, so I don't, I think everybody's happy with it. Y'all want to say something?
Yeah, we just wanna say thank you for the consideration, the application, and.
About having the questions for the young ladies?
Would you like to give us a little synopsis of maybe what's, what you got planned?
Sure, yeah.
Just directly from you?
Sure, so, um, so, uh, we had a goal to, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, to open an animal sanctuary, this has been a dream we had for about a decade. And so we searched for a farm, and after about ten years, we found the perfect farm in Buckingham County. Um, so we opened our animal sanctuary. The farm, then, we realized, lent itself to, um, to having an Airbnb, there was an existing cottage on it, it's a tiny house. Um, and in our pastures, we realized that, um, we could open up our pastures for campers, um, and RVs and tents. And now, this is our home, so we are limiting it to five to ten spaces, there are no hookups, there's nothing, it's, it's pack out. Um, so the revenue that we would get from any of the proposed events, the Airbnb, um, and the camping would go back into the animal sanctuary. Love it if you all would come and visit us.
So we're talking dry camping?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
You have a board member having a question? Okay, oh, we close the public hearing, then what is your pledge, boy?
Mr. Chairman, I vote, I vote to approve.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Davis, that we will approve this, uh, special use permit, are there any questions? All in favor? Mr. Miles?
Supervisor Miles votes aye, sir.
Seven, yes, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Right, that's, that's, yep.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Next public hearing is for case twenty-one SUP two ninety-six. The landowner and applicant is Buckingham Cattlemen's Association. Property is located at Tax Map One Twenty-two, Parcel Four, Lot Three A, it contains approximately five acres, and it is at one one eight five one West James Anderson Highway. It is in the Mayesville Magisterial District. The applicant wishes to continue the agricultural use as has been consistent with the current uses as approved in twenty thirteen SUP two seventeen, and to promote increased agricultural use and agritourism use. The applicant is asking for a modification and amendment to their original approval to include Striking Conditions Nine and Twenty-two, amending Condition Twenty-one to state, the facility shall be used for indoor meetings, conferences, receptions, sales trainings, and outdoor agritourism events such as, but not limited to, agricultural sales, shipping, bull riding, barrel racing, roping, horse training, cattle handling, and festivals. Um, of course, our applicant and representatives of the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association are here with us this evening.
At this time, open the public hearing.
One person to sign up to speak.
All right.
J. Alvin Thomas Jr., District Two.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, uh, my name is James Alvin Thomas Junior, I'm from District Two, eleven, twelve, Thomas Road, Dillon, Virginia. I am the Secretary of Buckingham Cattlemen's Association, and I spoke at the public hearing for the Planning Commission. I just thought it was appropriate for me to come and speak to this one also in support of this, uh, modifications and amendments to the, uh, SUP. Uh, this is a property that, uh, the Virginia Tobacco Indemification Commission has invested quite a bit of money in, the county of Buckingham, the Board of Supervisors have invested some money in it, and the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association has invested money and time in this facility, it's a good facility, many of you have been there and visited in it. Uh, it's a facility that we feel is underutilized, and we're just looking for other ways that we can utilize this to better serve the citizens, and make this a more, uh, community-involved project. So I'm just here in support of the modifications and amendments to this SUP. Thank you.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Thomas, about having a question for Mr. Thomas? All right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. We close the public hearing, boy, what is your pledge on this?
I'd like to go ahead and approve it with, uh, make sure we strike Number Nine, Number Twenty-two, and amend the Condition Twenty-one.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we approve this with the, uh, condition that he amended on this applicant. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next public hearing is for case twenty-one SUP two ninety-seven. Our landowners and applicants are George Goodwin and Pamela Goodwin at two six three Bellmead Lane in Scottsville. Tax Map Four, Parcel Nine, it contains approximately one hundred and two point three acres, and it is located at two ninety-one Bellmead Lane. This is in the Slate River Magisterial District as well. It's currently Zoned A One, and they wish to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast with campsite. Mr. Goodwin is here with us this evening to discuss, um, his project and answer any questions that you may have this evening.
We at this time, we open up the public hearing.
Anyone signed up to speak?
I haven't heard any negative comments against it, and they've been, um, long-time residents, so they're in the Scottsville area, I think they do a good job with the bed and breakfast. I asked the board if they could consider passing this.
Mr. Goodwin here?
Yes, sir, right there.
Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
I've got a question. Uh, Ms. Edmiston, on Condition Number Five, it says, no campground structure shall be erected within fifty feet if adjoining, is it supposed to be of adjoining properties?
It should be IBO, correct that.
Make sure.
Were we talking about dry camping?
Yes, sir.
And no water, no electric?
What we're doing different is mowing the grass more often.
Mm-mm. He not been in service.
Too rough for me.
All right, we close.
Just a little too rough.
We close the public hearing this time, what is your pledge, boy?
I make a motion, we approve it. Second.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Allen, that we approve this, are there any questions? All in favor? Miles?
Supervisor Miles votes aye, sir.
Seven, yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming.
Mr. Chairman, the next two cases are continuations. Um, it's case twenty-one SUP two eighty-five and twenty-one SUP two eighty-six. In your board packet, there is a letter from Evan Carlson, one of the representatives from Impact Power Solutions, I will read that. Dear Board, we are respectfully requesting that the county act on our applications without further delay. These projects are much smaller than the one that provoked investigation into the ordinance amendment. Please review our applications based on their own merit, they receive no objections at the public hearing, hearings or subsequent hearings. In fact, there was support of these small projects during the public hearings of other more contentious, large-scale utility projects approved in the county. Delays in amendments are detrimental to our projects and reduce the likelihood that they will be completed. In an effort to be good communicators and responsible developers, we sent representatives on several business trips to Buckingham County to attend several meetings in person, but we feel our presence was ignored, we are making ourselves available to county staff for questions. Please act upon our applications without further delay and communicate with us regarding any questions or concerns. Uh, Mr. Jesse Diamond is available this evening via Zoom to discuss any questions that you may have. Um, I will state that both of these applications were introduced in August initially to the, to the Planning Commission. They are both less than two megawatt, they are solar, community solar gardens, they are not on a utility, um, solar producing scale. Uh, but they have been, um, for public consumption their entire project since August of twenty twenty-one.
So what we're doing now, Ms. Edmiston's, yes, sir.
We've already had a public hearing on it?
Yes.
I vote that we approve case twenty-one dash SUP two eight five.
Second.
That's both of them?
Hey, it's gotta be one at a time.
One at a time? Uh, it's been motioning, uh, uh, motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, that we approve this, uh, this case twenty-one SUP two eighty-five. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Miles?
Aye.
Seven, yes? All right, number two?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve case twenty-one dash SUP two eight six.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, that we approve this, uh, case twenty-one SUP two eighty-six. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, yes, all right, Ms. Edmiston?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a request from the Planning Commission. Um, the Planning Commission held its regularly scheduled meeting January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Case twenty-two SUP two ninety-nine Apex Riverstone Solar was introduced. The Planning Commission voted to hold a public hearing for this case, and if agreeable, has requested the Board of Supervisors to join in attendance on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at six PM. I have included the introduction that was presented to the Planning Commission on January twenty-fourth for this project. Once again, the landowner's warehouser and the applicant is Apex Clean Energy. The tax maps, um, are seventeen parcel eight, containing approximately five hundred and twenty acres. Tax map seventeen parcel nine, it contains just over ninety-seven acres. Tax map seventeen parcel thirteen, containing fifty-nine point five acres, and tax map eighteen parcel two, containing approximately twelve hundred eighty-six point four acres. And these parcels are north of Bridgeport Road, east of Route Twenty, west of hardware, and in the Slate River Magisterial District, currently owned, zoned A One. And this, uh, the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a one hundred forty-nine point five megawatt utility scale solar facility on approximately nineteen hundred and ninety-six acres. Um, there was a request, of course, of the SUP that was approved, um, twenty-one SUP two ninety for Apex Riverstone Solar. Um, I can read part of this introduction for you as well. Riverstone Solar, um, LLC to allow for the construction and operation of the one forty-nine point five megawatt utility scale solar facility. The project is being developed by Apex Clean Energy, a renewable energy development, construction and operations company based in Charlottesville, Virginia. Board of Supervisors, as I mentioned, approved twenty-one SUP not, two ninety for Apex Riverstone Solar on November the eighth. Condition seven, limited the solar equipment and accompanying stormwater features to no more than seventeen hundred and twenty-nine acres of the incorrectly stated acreage of the project as nineteen sixty-six and should have been nineteen ninety-six. The application for case twenty-two SUP two ninety-nine was received due to ongoing studies and evaluations necessitating to request for the additional thirty-five acres that will be used by the applicant as additional space that will permit flexibility in the design and construction of the project. The applicant states that while the project can still be constructed in accordance The applicant states that while the project can still be constructed in accordance with twenty-one, SUP two ninety approval, the additional thirty-five acres will allow avoidance of cultural or environmental sensitive areas that may be identified during environmental studies or may be used as an alternative internal access to the interconnection switching station, staging of construction equipment, or additional solar equipment. The additional thirty-five acres actually increases the seventeen hundred and twenty-nine acres of the maximum extents to seventeen hundred and sixty-four acres of the maximum extents within the nineteen hundred. And there's been a confirmation of a final survey, it's actually nineteen hundred and ninety-two acres, so your additional thirty-five acres impacts the seventeen hundred and twenty-nine acres increased to seventeen sixty-four for your stormwater features.
Okay, so, it's a request from the Planning Commission, hold a joint public hearing on February the twenty-eighth at six o'clock. Board, do you agree with that?
I'm good with that.
I sense that the board, I don't guess we need a motion on that, do we?
You don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion, Mr. Scotty. Yeah, okay, we will do that, okay.
Mister Chairman, while I just have the microphone, for just a couple more minutes, I do want to let you know that at each of your stations, I have included revised conditions to twenty-two, SUP two ninety-nine in an effort to respond to the questions, comments, and concerns of the citizens of the county administration and from Apex themselves in an effort to be, make a positive impact in regard to this project. So, they are at your station, and we also have Jimmy Merrick, a representative of Apex Clean Energy here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Edmiston. We went down to M, Department of Agent Reports and Items of Consideration. M one, Board of Appeal, Board of Zoning Appeals Resolution for Ms. Stephanie Roach, and Consider A Recommendation to the Circuit Court Judge for New Appointment.
Mister Chairman, she represented the Mayville District, and she has since moved out of the county, and I do not have, and at this time, I have recommendation for you all for appointment.
Okay, thank you. Mister Davis, Mr. Carter Davis, donation appropriation.
Good for you guys.
Yep, I'm good.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm in front of you this evening to ask you to appropriate a donation that we received from Kynite Mining and the amount of seventeen thousand dollars. They have historically donated this amount of funds to the Volunteer EMS Agency, so they did so again this year. We could not process that check because that agency doesn't exist, so I worked with Kynite staff on getting that rewritten. There was some question, you know, what do we plan to do with the funds? So, I worked with Mister Carter and advised him about the need for sheltering supplies in the county, that Red Cross trailer that used to sit at the Dillon Volunteer Fire Department used to have, housed the sheltering supplies here in Buckingham, but Red Cross took that back last summer, and their suggestion was we, as a county, get our own assets. So, at this time, the emergency manager, Ryan Holland, is going to, if you guys appropriate these funds, is going to acquire those assets with those funds, and she will happily give you a report on that once she gets those here and in service. If you have any questions for me.
What, you have any questions for Mister Davis? What is your pledge?
So, move for him to accept the seventeen thou.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Matthew, that we appropriate this. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, seven, yes, thank you, Mister Davis.
Thank you.
Number three, item three, refinancing to Ola Haya rate loans, Mr. Scotty.
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman, I'll take that one. As you all know, the interest rates are still considerably lower than in the past. Working with Davenport, our financing agency, we have identified two loans that have potential for savings by refinancing. We have two, one of each, a sewer loan and a wastewater loan. One of these loans was originated back in April sixteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, in the amount of one million two sixty-eight, two hundred dollars, at four and a half percent, at a term of forty years. This loan was back in nineteen ninety-eight for an upgrade to the old water plant when we were taking that over from the town of Dillon. The second loan with potential is a loan from September thirteenth, two thousand and five, in about one point one million dollars, at a rate of four and one point two five percent, at a term of forty years. This loan was to upgrade the sewer lines through Dillon when we took over the project, that facility. As you all may know or may not know, these USDA loans, they give you good rates and terms, but all of them are forty years, so when you get those lower payments, they spread out over time, so that's why they're all forty years. With these, rates of these two loans being above four percent, we're thinking we can get these rates down, cut in half somewhere near, maybe near two percent. This allows us to shorten the terms of the loans and maybe or decrease the payments. I'm asking you tonight to allow us to continue work with Davenport to put in a RFP, which will be a bank RFP, to, just like a project, we will bid it out to different banks and see what kind of results we get. Once we get those bids back, we can choose which is the best package for us, or we can stick and do what we got and not do anything at all. And also important is, this is no cost to the county, Davenport does not charge us anything until we decide we want to accept the bids when they come back. It was just, uh, I wouldn't say fishing, but just a search and see if we can get anything lower or better than we got right now.
So moved, Mister Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, that we would offer out this, uh, supervisor, for Mister Carter to proceed with. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, yes, all right. M four, Clerk of Circuit Court, Justice Medica, consider appropriation of thirty-three thousand one hundred forty-six received from the Library of Virginia through the Circuit Court Preservation Program, through the Conservation Grant to the Item Line twenty-one, six hundred dash thirty-one ten.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant. All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, yes. M five, Sheriff, request for twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifteen match for funds to appropriate to the sheriff's budget in order to receive grant of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, to implement the Body-Worn Cameras Program, which carries a fifty-fifty match.
Evening. Before we get into that, I have some other announcements from the sheriff's office. We did receive some other additional grant monies that are coming in slowly. There was a three thousand dollar appropriation from the Virginia nine-one-one Service Board for fiscal year twenty-three for training. There was a law enforcement block grant for one thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. First Sergeant Dave Moody was successful on a grant for supplemental funding for the coronavirus, forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. And then, that leads us to our request tonight for the matching funds of a grant of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. This is a unique grant. It's atypical, or not atypical of a normal grant. This was something special that the Department of Justice had put out that targeted small rural areas. They had seven point six million dollars to distribute across the nation. They awarded two hundred and fifty-eight grants out of that money across the nation, which included one hundred and ninety-eight small towns and forty-nine rural sheriff's office. One of four in Virginia to get this. Only forty-four states were awarded, so this is pretty unique. We're very fortunate to actually get this because of the magnitude that was nationwide. But basically, it's a fifty-fifty match. We're asking the board to appropriate that additional money to initiate a body-worn camera program for the sheriff's office.
I have a question, Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Me too.
Mister Carter, are there any funds available from, uh, Rescue Recovery or any of the stimulus package money available for any of these funds?
Not for this particular fund, because this is a grant, so you can't use those grant funds to cover this grant program.
What's the long-term money for care?
We're anticipating there's an annual cost to run the software for the company that we're going to go with, which integrates to our in-car camera, so we're trying to save money by utilizing the same company, because we got the infrastructure there. About forty-five hundred dollars a year for annual subscription cost.
Plus cameras.
That's purchased in this grant.
Right, but if the camera breaks when you're wrestling with a...
There is a warranty that comes with the cameras upon initial, it's a five-year warranty, so if anything happens to that camera within the first five years, it's replaced.
For defect or for damage?
Across the board. That was included in the pricing that we...
How do we look on the sheriff's budget from last year? For this fiscal year? That we're in right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have not really gotten into the sheriff's office budget yet. As you know, we're just completing our budget initial cycle, so me and Finance Director Kevin will be getting into that pretty soon.
Right, well, that's for this coming year. What about the current year?
And that, that's what I'm saying, that, when we get into it, we look at that six months, that half a year, so we can see kind of where they are based on their existing budget. Kevin, have you looked at their sheriff's office yet?
I don't have all figures in front of me.
Right.
This funding got to happen in this fiscal year or next year?
The one we're in right now. So, if you're overdrawn in this year, then we're going to be giving you more money on top of the twenty-seven thousand dollars.
That's if we're overdrawn, we're not anticipating on being overdrawn.
Could Mister, um, I'm trying to think his name.
Hickman.
Hickman, go, I'm sorry, had a senior citizen moment. Go get those papers, while I be jumping in a couple more items. Let's take a seat right there, we'll be back to you, thank you. Let's move down, I, M six, Virginia Corporate Extension returned additional fifteen thousand appropriate to them this fiscal year due to not being able to use the funds.
Yes, that's kind of a unique item, Mister Chairman. Back in the past, back in the fall, you guys appropriated additional fifteen thousand to the Extension Office for them to hire, or to keep on a part-time assistant. If you remember correctly, they lost some state funding, and they came to you guys asking to fill that need until they could get more state funding or to the end of the fiscal year. Well, they didn't fill that position, so they, they don't need the money anymore, so this letter is asking you all, saying they don't need the money, they're going to give it back to the county, so just like when you guys appropriate money, I guess I would need a motion, you guys accepting that money back to the county.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Matthew, that we accept this money back to the county. Are there any questions, all in favor?
I'd like to thank the Cooperative Extension Agents for doing that.
Mr. Ryan Melzner, aye, Mister Chairman.
Seven, yes, thank you, Mister Matthews.
Appreciate them.
You know, you were getting money back.
That's right.
Uh, item eight, hotel status, what's got, you got there?
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman. Back in twenty nineteen, the board was working with the securing a hotel here in the county, we talked about a little bit tonight, on Wingo Road. On October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, the board had a public hearing for the purpose of selling three point five acres of the property along Wingo Road for thirty-five thousand. After the public hearing, it was unanimous decision of the board to sell the property. The board also sent a real estate taxes in a package to the Industrial Development Authority for the approval. The IDA came back with approval for the tax incentive package, and the tax incentive package was for five years, no taxes in the first year, and then increasing twenty-five percent each year until five, year five, when the business would be paying the full one hundred percent of their real estate taxes. And for reference, just below, you can see in year one, once again, I said before, we would, the hotel would pay zero taxes in real estate. Year two, they would pay twenty-five, year three, fifty percent, year four, seventy-five percent, and year five, they would be paying a hundred percent of their taxes. As we've done this before at other businesses, to try to see that they succeed in the county, we don't kind of put too much strain on them beginning, because you know, most businesses will fail or survive in that first couple of years. All this was moving forward, and we thought we had seen, we would see the progress soon, and then, of course, COVID hit. The hotel was put on hold, like many capital projects, because of uncertainty in their revenues and their financing. I'm glad to announce that the hotel is backing up and ready to go, they have secured their finances, they are ready to move forward once again. Since this was over two years ago, and I'm asking you tonight to affirm your vote on October twenty, October of twenty nineteen, and allow the county minister to sign the necessary documents to make this happen.
Mister Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors affirm the action it took at its meeting on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, after a public hearing, to sell NHN Incorporated, or its sign, a three point five acre tract of land for the construction of a fifty-five room hotel with a conference room and other ancillary facilities, including, but not limited to, a restaurant for the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars upon the terms and conditions set forth in a motion at that meeting, and the county administrator be designated to sign on behalf of the Board of Supervisors the necessary documents to give effect to that action.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we would give the county administrator permission to go file with this project. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Those opposed. M nine.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we got seven, seven.
Sorry.
If I could show that I abstained, because I was not on the board on October fifteenth, nineteen.
Okay, you got that, Miss Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you, so that's six.
Thank you.
Let's move down to M nine, considering renewing Buckingham Youth League lease agreement with Gene Dixon Park.
So move.
I have a question on that.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mister Bryant.
Mister Carter?
Sir.
What's the status of making improvements down there? I know we had set aside some, some funds. Is Todd looking at making the necessary improvements there? I know we set aside money for lights and for the score, the scoring tower slash concession slash bathroom area?
Yes, the last I heard from Todd was that he was still looking at getting prices on that. I'm assuming Supervisor Bryant, that he's waiting till the spring to get into construction season, but last I talked to him, he was still looking into those projects getting them completed for the down.
Okay, can you light a fire under him and...
Yes, sir.
Ask him to give us a heads up on it?
What to pledge to the board that this, uh...
Oh, I'll second Mister Allen's motion.
Okay. If it motion by Mister Allen, Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we would consider renewing this Buckingham Youth League lease agreement with Gene Dixon Park. Questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, seven, yes.
And while we're on this subject, do you guys want to, next time, look at doing it for longer term? Because I know we were doing that on a year-to-year basis, because they had some issues down there, but this has been like five years now, do you want to look at doing a longer lease? Or do you want to stick it, keep it year-to-year?
Danny?
It could a little bit long.
Okay, that's fine.
Say like it is.
I agree.
Okay. Let's back up down to, um, M five, with the question of the sheriff department. What's your question, Mister Bryant?
Have they spent one point three six nine one seven five million so far out of their two hundred, two point three nine nine three two million budget? Is that what the deal is?
One point three out of two point five four three, Mister Chairman.
Appropriate was the ones...
Yes, sir.
Are we through the second quarter yet, or...
Yes, these numbers are done for the first half, so you're six months in when these numbers were ran. So, it's exactly half of the fiscal year.
So, this is halfway through, and we still got another half to go. It looks like if, if they stay on track, they're going to bust their budget.
They're a little bit over exactly fifty percent, but once again, some of those expenses might have been one-time things or abnormal things that they paid upfront that they don't have spaced out one twelfth of the month. Say, for instance, they come back and bought some fuel or something, that could be in over two-month period, but you won't have it every month over the remaining six months. You have some vehicles in there too, as well, Brent?
I don't know what you all looking at, so... I don't know what you all looking at, so.
Yeah, you could get sixty-nine thousand.
Right, so they had those vehicles, they won't have those in the second half, so some things are already front-loaded.
Right.
One-point-two million left, that's something gross.
Yes, when I divided, I'm showing they've spent fifty-three percent, so they're close to fifty percent.
And both vehicles are to that?
Yeah.
So how many cameras you got now, or do you have any?
We have zero body cameras.
Right.
Break into that to make it one platform.
Would help you out if you had to go to court for some reason?
Main, yeah, the main thing is, you know, it's transparency with the citizenry, you know, if on or whatever that's being captured, it's a liability.
How many cameras does Brent do now?
That one has twenty in it, so that would outfit everybody. Investigators.
Hold on, I thought I saw, Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
I thought I saw something where you could spend some of the funds for the, as far as law enforcement, as far as the grant money, I mean, the money that was left over from the COVID stuff and all.
Um.
Why couldn't we use that for body cameras, that's part of the law enforcement?
Well, all the grants that I've seen, Supervisors, that this is a grant they're applying for, so you can't use other grant money to pay for, to match another grant, yeah.
I was just saw where they was talking on that about using it for law enforcement, so I was just...
Yes, if we don't appropriate the twenty-seven thousand, then they'll lose the funding for the grant, right?
Right.
Yep.
Guess we have to do it, don't we?
I think it's a good idea, go on, do it, we got to look out for them, and just looking out for people in the county and everything.
County law, I make a motion.
Yeah.
Good luck, sucker.
I'll second you.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Allen, that we would grant this request. Are there any questions? All in favor? Raise your hand. Miles?
Aye.
Seven, yes, thank you, sir.
Well, since you brought them up, you got three more things of money, do we need, can we vote on them now?
Do we need to wait?
We'll probably wait to the end, because some of the expenditures haven't come in yet.
Okay.
So typically, we, you know, we pay for them upfront and then ask for the reimbursement to come in. In all words, we haven't secured the funds yet, we've just been notified that we've been awarded.
All right, have a good day.
Any attorney matters?
Mr. Wright?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have three matters that I'd like to discuss with you tonight. The first and probably the, it's Haddon Ferry, we've been following that now for a regular while. Some information in your board package that shows that group that we would, had have been working with had finally secured a donor that provides them enough money to get permits and do inspections and get things back in line. They are also forming a, a nonprofit to really take the assets and run it. And what they do, well, they'll set aside some money to make sure they can make things happen. I think it's an appropriate time to go ahead and transfer the assets that the county acquired purely for the purpose of preserving them to the nonprofit, actually to Alamo Marshals for the Historical Society, and they'll disperse them. If the board's ready to act on that, I'd ask that you take some action to make that happen and authorize a signature on that agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Matthews, that we approve this. Any questions? All in favor? Mr. Miles?
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Second item goes in conjunction with the project that you all agreed to have a joint hearing with the planning commission on, on the twenty-eighth. We have a request notification from the Riverstone that they intend to end into a siding agreement with the county in regard to that. The siding agreements is in your package, there may be a tweak or two for it, but I'd ask that you set that for public hearing on February twenty-eighth, so that that can be considered enacted on at the same time the special use permit is.
Page to the board.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brian, second by Supervisor Allen, that we approve this. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Booty for public hearing, though, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, public hearing.
The third item really deals with the solid waste fee ordinance. If you recall, a few years ago, we approached the General Assembly about allowing the county to adopt a solid waste fee that's slowly related to waste management in the county. Some restrictions on the way it can be used. Solid Waste Committee began to look at this in the past month. They realized there are some avenues to really revamp the whole program that we need to be thinking about. What you have before you is a, is a interim position to allow the county to recover a little revenue from those non-residential landowners. Right now, they are able to get a permit to be able to use the solid waste, and anybody that doesn't have to have a county tag can get a solid waste permit if they live here. And this allows to recover a twenty-five-dollar fee on an annual basis, so that they'll have to have a decal display to get in to the solid waste site. It doesn't revamp county stickers and all, it simply adds, for those people who currently get them free, they might have to pay a little fee, twenty-five-dollar fee. What we're asking, if you want to move forward with this, you need to set this for public hearing to be considered at its next meeting.
Would the pledge to the board, we'll move forward to set a public hearing for March?
Yes, sir, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Brian, second by Supervisor Matthew, that we set a public hearing for this in our March meeting. Are any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter, county administrator report?
In your package, you have a letter from Toga Volunteer Fire Department about the winter storm and the things they did during that time period. I won't read the whole letter, but you can see, starting at second paragraph, it says, throughout the day on January third, Toga crews began to clear fallen trees from the roads throughout our area. By late afternoon, much of that work had been completed. As extent of the storm damage became clear and extended a period of power, outages seemed likely. Chief Bates reached out to Cody Davis at about eighteen-hundred hours to inquire as to whether or not he thought it would be necessary for Toga to open its facility as a relief shelter. Cody asked for some time to gather information to see what might be needed. In approximately eighteen-four, eighteen-forty-five hours, he called me back to ask that Toga proceed with opening our facility. At nineteen-thirty hours, Toga facility was open and operating as a relief shelter. Cody got word out to the county by text or phone notifications system, and Toga got out to more than forty-five-hundred followers on his Facebook page. By nineteen-thirty hours, Ryan Holland had delivered twenty cases of water and MREs or Toga's, to Toga's station to add to the food and beverages that Toga personnel had purchased as we made plans to open. Toga operated shelter continues on for Monday. He lists there some of the numbers that they served that day. Seventy-eight people were provided with at least one hot meal. Available food included hamburgers, hot dogs, barbecue, MREs, and sides as well, as well as water and sodas, all for free. Sixty-four people used Toga's facility to make, take a hot shower. Twenty-three people got water to Toga, twenty-three people got water at Toga to take home to their pets and animals. Eighty-five people used Toga's facility to charge their electrical devices, including one citizen who used it to charge the batteries for his electric heart device. In total, ninety-four people came to Toga to use our facility. I cannot overstate how deeply Toga appreciates the responsiveness that we received from Cody Davis and Ryan Holland as we got up and running on the third, as well as throughout the event. Please share our gratitude with them, and please share the support of the board of supervisors. So this letter from Chief Bates is just a, not example, we talked about last month, how we are lucky to have volunteers in this county that help out when in need, and we look after our neighbors. The last thing I have for you, in your package tonight, is Supervisor Miles can jump in on this when he gets a chance, but one of the things we're looking at, you know, we were part of the VGA. We thought a couple of years ago, we weren't getting our money with the VGA, so we got out of that. We thought that, you know, those economic opportunities were not coming to Buckingham, so we decided not to pay that seventeen thousand, and we decided we would try to do it in-house. We're not the only ones in this area that's having that same issues. All the surrounding counties are having that, as they too have left VGA. So the idea came up is, what if we have a regional economic development team? So Prince Edward, Cumberland, Buckingham, we could all go in together and do, and promote the region and not worry about promoting each individual locality. By doing it that way, you're looking at the region, so if Prince Edward gets a manufacturing firm, say, for instance, that's going to benefit Buckingham and the surrounding counties, because they might get the facility there, but it'll be Buckingham citizens that drive there and then get a job and work there. So, and the same goes with Buckingham as well, we get something here, we're sure we're going to have Prince Edward and Cumberland residents coming to be part of the workforce. So by going in together, we're thinking that this could help get something here or get something close by that would help our citizens. One of the pros I listed with this is that, you know, it's going to be regional, so it won't be all just Buckingham. But one of the cons is, and I won't need you to vote tonight on this, but they want us to set aside a fifty-thousand-dollar contribution to this regional effort. That's not a number that's set in stone, and that's just an estimate on what we probably need to set aside in our budget. You all will get to that when we do our budget, you will decide whether you want to add that or take it out, but I'm just giving to you guys food for thought to think about that. Because as you know, we would hire a full-time economic developer, it'd be a lot more than fifty thousand dollars to get somebody in here for that. So this is just an informational item for you guys to think about as we get close to the budget. Once again, you will see it again during budget time, whether you want to keep it in the budget or take it out, that'll be up to you guys, but it's just something to think about. Going to get all the high points, Supervisor Miles?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, yes, sir, you covered it very well. And just as Mr. Carter was saying, that we, we deal, you know, the five counties, including Buckingham and several others, don't actively participate or benefit from any strategic conversations that would help the region, so I definitely think this is a good path that we're on.
Well, what's the fifty thousand dollars going towards?
That's going to go towards the operation of that office, so it'll be, you will have to hire staff, you would have to have an office, so it'll be our contribution to that, that staff and that department. So instead of paying for the whole staff, you're only paying for part of the staff and their office.
That's a lot of money.
I would want, excuse me, Chair, I would want assurances that the other counties are putting their piece of the pie up too.
Yes, sir, we, we would, um...
Well, we went through this two or three, I mean, several years ago, before you were on the board, Mr. Davis, we were part of VGA. To my knowledge, we never got any referral, we got some referrals, but we never sealed the deal on anything that they presented to us for seventeen thousand dollars a year. So I don't, I can't remember how many years we participated in that, but, you know, at fifty thou, is that fifty thousand dollars annually, or is that, that's a one-time situation?
That would be annually, yes.
Well, no, that, that would be a no for me, I mean, right off the bat. We've done a really good job in-house, and I'm going to brag on Ms. Edmiston about this a little bit. We developed our own in-house Economic Development Committee about three or four years ago, when we got out of VGA. And, you know, we've had a couple of meetings since that has been developed. And I'm, I've, I'm actually on that committee, along with Mr. Miles, and I'm happy with the way it's going right now, to the tune of zero dollars, because we got six-hundred-and-fifty-some thousand dollars in a line item for economic development in Buckingham County that's in our budget. So that means I'm not having, we're not having to take fifty thousand dollars out of our budget to fund something for Prince Edward, Cumberland, and whoever else, and that's just my take on it.
So it would be fifty thou, that'd be a hundred-and-fifty thousand between us, Prince Edward, and Cumberland.
Be five counties, so it'd be...
Me, or Cumberland, not a way.
It'd be five counties, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I just think we're doing pretty well on our own right now. Not that I don't want to be a team player, but, you know, that's a lot of taxpayer money going for something that is no guarantee that we're going to get any benefits from it at all, you know?
Mr. Chairman, how, can I ask Mr. Carter a question? How much do we have in the Economic Development line item in the budget, Carter?
I think it's six-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, if I remember correctly.
And that's from the sale of some parcels, right?
That was sale of, uh, stuffs we've done along the years, we've kept that money waiting to use it for economic development.
Thank you.
What is the pledge to the board?
So, I mean, you don't need to take any action, and I'm just giving you information for when the budget time comes around. So it's just an informational item.
All right, thank you. Other board matters? And we need to go into executive session.
Chairman, I move that we move into executive closed session for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. That's code two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one dot a dot three.
Second.
If a motion by Supervisor Brian, second by Supervisor Allen, we go in there on executive session under this code that was stated, are there any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven, let's take a five-minute break.
Yes, sir.
About my Peter Waterville. About my Peter Waterville. (laughter) Go back into regular session, we need the motion to be in regular session.
Please don't jam me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good. Mr. Chairman, I move that we return to regular session and certification that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened was discussed or considered in the closed executive session.
Don't move. I'm talking.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, we will go back into regular session, nothing was discussed that would identify it in the motion. All in favor? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any action after, uh, second session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adjutize for public hearing in March, the transfer of sales of the Dillon Medical Building and property.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Supervisor Allen, that we will have a public hearing in March to transfer the property to the, uh, still of the Van End Dillon, the medical building. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Look, you all had this, uh, paper here about Cody Wilson, we're going to deal with that on the twentieth of, uh...
Okay.
Think about it and see what we can do on the twentieth of, uh...
All right.
At this time, we are, no more business coming for the board, we're going to recess the ravine on the twentieth of February at six o'clock.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy...